Can you hear us, Scott?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Yep, thank you.
Okay.
During the meeting of the Aurora City Council's call, are we here? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kaufman?
Here.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Hancock? Councilmember Drinsky? Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Mario?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Sundberg?
Here.
There's a quorum.
I can, this is pretty quick. We're done? Bye, please. We're done with roll call?
I already did roll call.
You're good, Katie? Okay.
Please join me in invocation. O Lord, our God and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industry, sound education, and good government. You're not our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the city council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the help of the community. Amen. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Executive session update. During the executive session, we discussed the sale of city-owned property lease agreements. See. Landing almost right. Landing acknowledgements. The city of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Uta-Appo, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the 48 contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Indigenous peoples have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries as these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard. The ties that these nations have to their traditional homelands and to their vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed. And we are called to be better stewards of the land that we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. Motion is in order for the approval of the minutes for December 16, 2024.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Sundberg, seconded by?
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve the minutes for December 16, 2024. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the approval of the minutes for December 16, 2024.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Mario?
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt the December 16, 2024 city council meeting minutes.
Swearing in ceremony of presiding judge, presiding judge, current associate judges, and current relief judges. Don Tucson, 18th Judicial District Court.
Y'all could fill up the whole thing. Y'all could fill it up.
Mayor Kaufman and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to swear in my family members. Judges, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am your attorney.
Having been duly reappointed.
Having been duly reappointed.
As municipal judge.
As municipal judge.
For the city of Aurora, Colorado.
For the city of Aurora, Colorado.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Administer the affairs of such office.
Administer the affairs of such office.
In accordance with the constitutions.
In accordance with the constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Aurora.
Of the city of Aurora.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thanks, team. Appreciate it. You can stay up here if you want, or if you want to go sit down. It's totally up to you. Looks like I'm up. All right. Repeat after me. I, Sean Day. I, Sean Day. Having been duly reappointed. Having been duly reappointed. As presiding judge for the city of Aurora. As presiding judge for the city of Aurora. Do solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully and impartially. That I will faithfully and impartially. Administer the affairs of such office. Administer the affairs of such office. In accordance with. In accordance with. The constitutions of the United States of America. The constitution of the United States of America. And the state of Colorado. And the state of Colorado. And the ordinances of the city of Aurora. And the ordinances of the city of Aurora. To the best of my judgment and ability. To the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you. Thanks, team. Appreciate it if you want. You can either have your seat because we have another really big ceremony to go through tonight, and that's the swearing in of our newly appointed city council member. I practiced for about 10 minutes to make sure that I tried to get your name right, so I'm going to see if I get this right. So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amselu Kasah.
I, Amselu Kasah.
Having been duly appointed. To the city council. For the city of Aurora, Colorado. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully and impartially. Administer the affairs of such office. In accordance with. The constitution of the United States of America. And of the state of Colorado. And the charter and ordinances. Of the city of Aurora. To the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God. Congratulations and welcome to city council.
Okay. Councilmember Hancock?
I want to move that we suspend the rules this evening to move public invited to be heard to the end of the council meeting.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hancock to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Just to clarify, it's going to be after council reports, but before adjournments. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Let's see, second.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Drinsky.
Moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by Councilmember Drinsky to suspend the rules.
It's a two-thirds, so, but there should be debate.
Okay. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Coombs?
So, there's a proposal on the agenda to make this the actual rules. And if that's what council decides to do, then that's what we do. But I don't believe that we should, without that being the rule and without folks expecting that in advance, make that the standard that they're held to at this time.
It is not, the motion is not to permanently, to make this a permanent rule. It is merely for this meeting. Is that correct, Councilmember Hancock? Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs?
I understood that, and I believe the people who already came and signed up before 6:20, as they're directed by our current rules, should have the respect of being able to have our current rules be what's exercised.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Mayor Pro Tim? Does he have anything? Councilmember Hancock?
No, that, my point is, this is why I want us to be able to conduct our business and prove it.
Right.
And then allow employees to be heard to take their time and spend time.
Very well.
To share it with them. Have some of us be able to discharge and redact the conversation.
Councilmember Bergen?
I just want to state that on the item, the agenda item 11A6, where we will be discussing whether to move public invited to the end, I will have an amendment to propose.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I call for the question on the adoption of the Hancock motion.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Mario?
No.
Councilmember Hancock? The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes, from Councilmember Coombs, Medina, and Mario to move public invited to be heard after council reports.
The motion before us now is the adoption of the agenda. Motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
It's moved by Mayor Pro Tim Sundberg, seconded by?
Mayor, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson to adopt the agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Hancock?
Yes.
The motion passes with 10 yes votes to adopt the agenda.
Let's see. The next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar. Item number 10A1 through 10C2.
Mayor, I move to approve items 10A through 10C2.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Sundberg, seconded by?
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs to approve the consent calendar on motions. Item number 10A1 to 10C2. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on motions. Item number 10A1 to 10C2.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Hancock? Councilmember Mario?
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
Next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, 11A1 to 11B2.
Mayor, I move to approve consent calendar, 11A1 to 11B2.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Councilmember Drinsky?
Yeah. Earlier, we got the list of folks that had signed up to speak on agenda items. And I know that there's folks signed up for 11A5 and 11A6. So I motion to approve items 11A1 through 11A4 and then 11B1 and B2.
I'm sorry.
So we, yeah, so we have a little bit of looking under him here. So we had Mayor Pro Tim Sundberg's motion that was not seconded. So, because he started speaking, so he just wanted to make sure. Mayor Pro Tim, will you accept that from the amendment?
Yes, I'm there.
And will you second that, Councilmember Drinsky?
Second.
Okay.
But it's to pool, I just want to point a clarification. We're pooling 11A5?
And 11A6.
And 11A6?
Yes. There's speakers signed up.
Very well. Okay. Question before us then is the adoption of the consent count on resolutions and ordinances, 11A1 to 11A4, 11AB1 to 11B2. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the question. Wait, do I go ahead and do those two items first?
No, no. Go ahead and do the consent agenda, then we'll go back.
Call for the question on the consent calendar, with the exception of 11A5 and 11A6.
Councilmember Mario? Councilmember Hancock?
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt the consent calendar for resolution. The motion passes to adopt the consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances with items 11A5 and 11A6 removed.
Go now please, retire to 11A5.
Item 11A5 is Resolution 202505, supporting immigrant communities and affirming commitment to the Aurora Immigrant Integration Plan 2020-2030.
Speaker.
Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is pretty straightforward. It's really just in light of the amount of fear and concern that has happened in our community for immigrants in our community, and concerns about potential deportation, as well as rhetoric, that does not fully value the contributions of all of our immigrants in the city of Aurora to affirm, as a city, our valuing and supporting of those members of our community and their contributions to the community.
Is there a second to?
All right, and yes, I move to approve 11A5.
Second, Mario.
And Mayor, we do have individuals who would like to speak.
Okay, very well.
The first person is Wayne Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, for this opportunity to speak in favor of this resolution. On behalf of myself and the Aurora Immigrant Protection Network, thank you to Councilman Coombs, City Manager Bachelor, and Assistant City Attorney Ward for sponsoring this resolution. My name is Wayne Laws. I've been a resident of Aurora for 47 years and advocate for immigrant rights and justice. As you know, Aurora is the most diverse city in our state, and one of the most diverse cities of its size in the entire nation. In the past, this diversity has been celebrated, was used to attract new residents and businesses. We had a positive narrative that all of Aurora could be proud of. Unfortunately, over the last several months, this narrative has been replaced with a false and misleading narrative, leading to the entire nation's negative view of Aurora. Trust must count, truth must counter this deceptive narrative. And by voting in favor of this resolution, you begin reclaiming and rebuilding Aurora's true narrative. The view that immigrant criminal gangs are overrunning Aurora is simply false. As you well aware of, immigrants are arrested and jailed less often than US-born population, and stricter immigration enforcement does not reduce crime. What is true is that greedy landlords are exploiting many of our immigrant community. Many are being cheated out of earned wages and are victims of crimes themselves. Day by day, they face prejudice and bias, yet they continue to persevere in the hope of building a life for themselves and their families against incredible odds. Instead of continuing to foster a false narrative, we must unite together to support our immigrant community, defend the values of inclusion, and promote equity and mutual respect, as this resolution calls for. The scapegoating of ethnic and religious minorities is historic in the US. Aurora showed the nation that this does not have to be the norm, and that we can take a different path. Our true narrative promotes the positive aspects of our immigrant community, the richness of our differing cultures, food, music, and the arts, and all the immigrant-owned businesses employing workers and contributing to the local economy. Immigrants fulfill essential roles in Aurora's workforce, especially in vital sectors like agriculture, construction, and healthcare. We call upon you tonight to approve this resolution as a first step in reclaiming Aurora's narrative. To help you in this, the Aurora Immigrant Protection Network is developing a Change the Narrative campaign, and we invite you to join us. Together, let Aurora reclaim its place. Leading the nation is a city that is proud of its diversity, honors the contributions of all, stands on the side of justice, and will not give in to those who promote fear and prejudice and wish to destroy what is valued. Thank you. If I could take a moment, I would like to have everybody here and support this resolution. Please, Dan, no.
Catherine.
There are no demonstrations.
Mayor, point of order. Can we read the decorum statement?
Before you proceed, I'm going to read the decorum statement.
Okay.
Council has created a public forum and wants to receive public input. You are asked to follow the same rules that council follows, including no attacks of a personal nature or causing a disturbance by clapping, snapping, cheering, or similar actions. We would ask you to refrain from using profanity as should those maybe watching. As mayor, I have been asked by council to admonish speakers for noncompliance. Please respect those who are speaking, whether you agree with the content or not. Outbursts from anyone are not permitted. Please refrain, again, from clapping, snapping, cheering, or booing to allow everyone the opportunity to be heard. Council shall be given an opportunity to address city staff to exchange contact information when the speaker is at the podium. Council may clarify statements related to the speaker's comments at the conclusion of public invited to be heard or on an agenda item, but shall not enter a debate with the speakers. Please proceed, you have three minutes.
My name is Kathy Ebersberger, and I'm a resident of Aurora. I wholeheartedly support Resolution 202505. A healthy community requires that we come together as neighbors to solve common problems. We want Aurora to be a city where all residents feel they belong and have an opportunity to thrive. We want our residents to welcome visitors from our sister cities who might have different accents. We want new businesses to be welcomed in Aurora, especially businesses educating us about foreign cultures. And we want our new neighbors to join us in helping to make Aurora a diverse and vibrant city where all residents thrive. Our immigrant neighbors give much to our city. They are entrepreneurs, creating jobs and services. They teach our children, care for us when we're sick, and build our infrastructure. They work hard and share our values. Indeed, many of them have been denied human rights and value our freedoms more than US-born residents. We don't have to be a city, sanctuary city, to cultivate a welcoming city. But we can't be a welcoming city if we regard each other with suspicion about immigration status, especially in a city where about 25% of us are immigrants. We can't be a welcoming city if a significant part of our population lives in terror of being deported. Every violation of law does not warrant the same punishment, and justice demands grace. If we don't nurture a city where all residents are supported, including all immigrants, and treated with respect, our city will die. Please pass the resolution supporting our immigrants. Thank you.
Vita Lance Brown. Vita Lance Brown. Okay.
Hi. My name is Vita Lance Brown, and I've been a resident of Aurora for 27 years. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Arapahoe and Douglas County. We have 32 members who live in Aurora, and we support Resolution 202505 wholeheartedly. The League is committed to fostering, cultivating, and preserving a culture of diversity, equity, inclusion, access, and belonging for all people. We believe in equality of opportunity for education, employment, and housing for all persons in the United States, regardless of their race, color, gender, religion, national origin, age, sexual orientation, or disability. The League does not support deporting individuals living in the country without legal permission who have no history of major and/or violent criminal activity. About 21% of Aurora's residents are immigrants and refugees. They enrich us all with their cultures, their dreams, their work ethic, and experiences. We are lucky to be able to experience different cultures right on Havana Street. I know many of these people because I have served on the Aurora City Sisters Board. And I think we just have to have compassion and empathy in our heart, because they are good people. They are hardworking, good people, who love their families and their communities. Thriving communities depend on diversity, inclusion, and leveraging unique cultural perspectives. Targeting immigrants as unwanted undermines these principles and limits the community and its potential to benefit from their skills and knowledge. Balancing immigration enforcement with policies that acknowledge immigrants' contributions is crucial to fostering resilient and inclusive communities. We cannot afford to create divisions in our communities between immigrants and US-born residents. We are Aurora. We are stronger together. All Aurora residents need to feel safe, valued, included, and have the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Jan Wilson. Jan Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I am speaking on behalf of Resolution 202505. My name is Jan Wilson. I've been a resident of Aurora for 50, over 51 years. I've always been proud to live in Aurora. I believed it to be a good place to have raised my family. Aurora is a fast-growing diverse city where one in five residents is an immigrant. These immigrants are local business owners, teachers, students, healthcare providers, and neighbors. In addition to the cultural richness that immigrants bring to our city, their contributions are vital economically. In 2022 alone, undocumented immigrants throughout our state paid $436.5 million in taxes. In 40 states, including Colorado, undocumented immigrants paid higher tax rates than the top 1% of the income scale in those states. I've been happy to see efforts by Aurora to publicly affirm and show support for these newcomers to our city. Just one example is the Aurora Global Fest. I love being part of this beautifully diverse city. Needless to say, this positive direction has been reversed in the recent months because of inflammatory, exaggerated, and false information that has brought stigma to our city and justified fear to our undocumented immigrants. Sadly, I have family members who called me and think I'm living in someplace I shouldn't be living. That makes me sad. This resolution and the sincere widespread dissemination of its belief and commitment is a necessary step to correct these destructive actions and to put our city on a path to healing. I'm asking this council for an answer to this question. Will Aurora leadership and police follow the laws prescribing and limiting collaboration with ICE? Will the leadership protect our immigrants and let them know loudly and repeatedly that they are valued in our city and that we will take our commitment to them seriously? We must remain dedicated to welcoming and celebrating our immigrant communities. This resolution upholds our commitment to supporting our immigrant community, and I'm asking for your yes vote. And I'm asking again, will Aurora leadership and police follow the laws prescribing and limiting collaboration with ICE? Will the leadership protect our immigrants and let them know loudly and repeatedly that they are valued in our city and that we will take our commitment to them seriously? Thank you.
That was the last individual.
I'm sorry, what's that, Katie?
That was the last individual to speak.
Okay. I have an amendment that I want to offer. I'm not sure that, Katie, let me just read it as opposed to putting it up. I'm not sure that we have. I've changed the language a little bit. So when we say, in the last whereas clause. In the last whereas clause, it says, whereas the incoming presidential administration's threats of mass deportation risk undermining Aurora's progress, damaging trust, and creating fear among immigrant communities. I'd like to change it to the following. The incoming presidential administration has created uncertainty about the future of Aurora's residents who are in the United States under the Temporary Protected Status Program, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program, or have been placed on humanitarian parole pending the adjudication of their asylum claims. I think, look, if you're undocumented, you're undocumented, and that's always been a challenge. I think what we have that's new is that people that have been given temporary status in the country, whether it's, they're under the DACA program that could be reversed, that was put in place by executive order that can be reversed by executive order, or they're under temporary protected status, like a lot of our Salvadoran community that came here in 2001 following an earthquake. And so you have fathers and grandfathers, you have business owners that are here under temporary protected status that could be reversed, as well as, whether you agree with the policy or not, a number of, a large number of individuals crossed the border illegally were subsequently arrested, requested political asylum, and were granted humanitarian parole and given a court date to adjudicate their case. And I think that those should all go forward. And so, let me do that as the First Amendment to, that would replace, again, whereas the incoming presidential administration's threats of mass deportation risk undermining Aurora's progress, damaging trust, and creating the fear of immigrant communities. Councilmember Coombs.
Can I clarify? So, is there a reason to strike the second part? I understand you want to replace threats of mass deportation with the clause that you stated.
I have an amendment for the second.
Can we retain the rest of that phrase that includes risks creating fear, undermining trust, et cetera?
See, where would that go?
Uncertainty.
Yeah, I think that, I'm okay with that. It would just amplify, if you want to include that language. What I don't like, but I want it, the key thing is that it'd be qualified to the different categories that I just mentioned.
And just procedurally, Councilmember Coombs and Mayor, there wasn't a second. Are you considering that as a friendly amendment?
That's what I was trying to determine by clarifying that language. I mean, I also think that all immigrants should be supported, but I will accept your. but I will accept your enumeration as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Katie, were you able to get that drafted and put up on the screen? Perfect. So you don't need a vote on it because it's been accepted.
Well, there's a second part.
Well, you have another one.
There's another clause he wants to make.
Okay, so the Second Amendment would be where it says, "Under Section 1, the Aurora City Council resolves as follows: Amendment of immigrant communities. The City of Aurora reaffirms its steadfast support for its immigrants and stands in opposition to federal policies that promote fear, division, or mass deportation." And then what I have is that the City of Aurora reaffirms its steadfast support for its immigrants and stands in opposition to federal policies that promote the revocation of the existing Temporary Protected Status Program, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program, or individuals that have been placed on humanitarian parole pending the adjudication of their asylum claims.
Mayor.
Yes.
So I'm just trying to clarify where which whereas clause here amended.
Oh, it's Section 1, yeah.
It's Section 1, so it's commitment to immigrant communities. So it's merely... I'm doing the same thing. I'm merely qualifying it by those three categories.
I wouldn't accept that as a friendly amendment only because I think we should reaffirm our steadfast support for all immigrants, and that includes people who may have a green card, people who may have gotten citizenship. So I think it just... That one is too narrowly prescribed. It doesn't state that support for...
So no, it hasn't been accepted as a friendly. We just need a second for the mayor's Second Amendment.
Well, let me just state this. Okay. So that I don't think necessarily being pro-immigrant is being pro-undocumented immigrant. So we may differ on that. And so that's why I think it's important... So if you want to put in immigrants, you know, legal permanent, what is it, LPR? Legal permanent residence or something, that's fine. But I think you get into a lot of other categories. The reason why I enumerated these categories is because the other categories would probably require a change in statute to change the policy by Congress where these can be done unilaterally by a new administration. That's why I chose those three categories.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
So this is a resolution. It's not an actual ordinance. And so the reason I'm not accepting that is because that portion is a statement of values, and I think those values should be stated universally and not narrowly prescribed. Whereas the other ones that are about what the administration could do, I understand the narrow statement.
Okay, so let me be clear. Our difference is that these are people that have a temporary legal status in the country that could be reversed by the administration. And I think what Councilmember Coombs did by the broader language is you're including all undocumented individuals, which I do not include in this. So...
Okay. So procedurally, again, Mayor, you made the amendment. We just need a second so we can debate it.
Okay.
Do you have a second for the mayor's amendment?
Yes. I'll say.
Okay.
So now procedurally, you guys will debate the amendment before you vote on it to see if it actually amends the underlying resolution.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, it's a little bit confusing. We did pass this particular plan, the Immigration Integration Plan, back, what, in 2019 or 2020?
Yeah, December 2020.
In December of 2020. So it was passed by our council. So I'm just... We're now getting into immigration law, which is done at the federal level. I think I got in trouble one time on this dais for introducing something that was much more wider in scope on...
Than even federal level.
Yeah, on a federal level.
You went to the international level.
I did, but so I... I mean, I'm in support of the plan that we passed. I'm just... We're starting to get into a lot of immigration policy, which I don't think is our, you know, our wheelhouse that is to be done by Congress. So I'm having some concerns and some hesitation to support the changes.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lawson, then Councilmember Coombs.
So as Councilmember Bergen said, we did pass the Integration Plan in the majority of the whole council. And so what I'm trying to understand with the sponsor is that within the Integration Plan, it has nothing about deportation or anything. It has everything else in here. Investment in public safety, continuous of economic and global leadership, investment in health and wellness, celebration of cultural diversity, enhancement of language access. So for the city, for the attorney, I mean, how can... If we've... A council has already approved this plan without the federal policies that promote fear and division or mass deportation. To me, that would be like a separate resolution that the sponsor should consider. I just don't think... We've already voted on this. The council voted on this. But we didn't have... These things are not currently in the plan that I even read over the weekend. So can you explain to me how the council member can add something when she's talking about that it's we're going to reaffirm the Integration Plan when this part wasn't even in there?
Well, this is...
And I know it's a resolution, but I'm just trying to understand how something can be placed in something in a plan that we supported, and then it didn't have anything in there. I read the 12 objectives, and it did not have that in there at all. So to me, this should be a separate resolution, not if she wants us to support this particular resolution.
I don't think that's something probably for the...
Excuse me, decorum, Mayor. Councilmember... Yeah, Councilmember Coombs always talks about decorum, so can I have decorum, please? Yeah. Oh, I do abide by it. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawson.
Since I was interrupted. Yes.
Can I address that real quick?
Yes, please.
So that's why on all the resolutions, we do put Section 3 that says, "All resolutions in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed only to the extent of such conflict." So if you guys did pass this to reaffirm that, it would technically change what you passed in 2010 to what it is now, how it's put into this resolution.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation and for giving me that insight. This, like I said, we did support this. I don't support this with the language that is currently in there on that one topic.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs and Councilmember Bergen.
So just to clarify, those are two separate clauses. So that's not saying, "Let's amend the immigrant integration plan to include that clause." It's a separate clause, a general statement of values, as I indicated in my statement to the mayor, reaffirming our commitment to immigrants and then "and" opposing federal policies, which we do take positions on federal policies. We just took positions on federal policies today in study session. That doesn't create an ordinance or change an existing plan. It just says, "And we express this value." That's all that's doing.
Councilmember Bergen.
I thought I heard our city attorney say that by approving this, we are changing the plan that currently was approved by, I think unanimously, by the council previous that goes through 2030. So I would not support this. I'm in support of what we approved, and I think it would have to be a separate item.
Further discussion?
This is on your Second Amendment, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember...
Just from a broader viewpoint, I want to stress that the City of Aurora has a special affinity for immigrants, and we are concerned about their safety and their well-being. I wholly support our Office of International Immigrant Affairs. I think they do an excellent job with encouraging homeownership, teaching of English, business ownership, leadership development, ultimately encouraging people to become citizens. Aurora Mental Health and Recovery has an excellent, robust program that we've seen that helps folks that have recently come here who've gone through traumatic situations. So our city is supportive in a lot of different ways. That's all I have to say.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
Can I propose an alternate amendment that would take the first commitment to immigrant communities? Well, I'm going to ask you if this is a friendly amendment to your amendment. Just say, "The City of Aurora reaffirms its steadfast support for its immigrants," period.
On the... To replace...
So it would just strike everything after in that clause.
The first whereas clause. I had the last whereas clause.
No, in Section 1, "Commitment to immigrant communities."
Period. See, Aurora reaffirms its steadfast support. That's a friendly amendment. Okay.
Okay. So I want to... Procedurally, we had an amendment that was seconded. Then we have a friendly amendment to the amendment, and everybody... The sponsor is good with reading Section 1, "Commitment to immigrant communities," to read, "The City of Aurora reaffirms its steadfast support for its immigrants," period. Okay? So that is... Because it's all friendlies. That's now how the resolution reads.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion?
Mayor.
Well, oh, wait. So this... Do we have to vote? Oh, we vote on it?
You don't have to because it's...
We go to the whole resolution.
So now the resolution has been amended twice by friendly amendments, and Ms. Arteri is... I don't... Yeah, she's gonna probably slap me. I'm sorry. Do you have it? Do you can put it up on the screen?
I don't have the availability to put it on the screen, but it's in the Voting eScribe app for everybody to see.
Okay.
Okay. So the second one, I think, is clear. It's just the first one that changed the whereas, the last whereas clause.
Okay. So now we're to the resolution itself?
Correct. And there's been a motion and a secondary ready to vote. It's been amended. So now give me more discussion or vote.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Durensky.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to point out that we actually made history tonight in the City of Aurora, putting Omseleu Casao on this council. And it's unfortunate that the sponsor of this didn't vote for Mr. Casao. I also have an issue with ever saying that we are going to support all of the migrants because, yes, President Trump did say that our entire city was being taken over. That's absolutely not true. It's also not just affected and impacted a handful of apartment complexes. And even if it was one apartment complex or one family, that's one too many. So when we say, "Everybody is welcome here," Trandaragua is not welcome here. The gangs, the criminals are not welcome here. Tom Homan has made clear... Tom Homan has made clear that he is coming for the criminals. He is coming for the criminals across the country. And I think that that's like 1.5 million. The last number I heard was currently in this country, there are 1.5 million people with active deportation orders that have to be found and have to be deported. So those people with active deportation orders, those people are criminals. They have come here. And I'm not just talking about crossing the border illegally. I'm talking about they have come here, and they have committed crimes, and they have hurt other individuals. And I find it interesting on the third whereas that nine countries are named, but Venezuela is left out. And I think that the largest population that has come into Colorado, especially the Denver metro area in recent months, last couple of years, are the Venezuelans. And when we talk about community policing and public safety, you know, I'm in a group chat with 100 Venezuelans and a translator trying to make sure every day... I check in with them every day to make sure no one's gotten missing. I've taken the Salvation Army out to feed these people. So Venezuela being left out, I believe Venezuelans should be protected. Currently, they are the target of Trandaragua that is here in the Denver metro area. So I think that Venezuela should be included. But ultimately, at the end of this, we support our immigrant community. We put an immigrant proudly on this council tonight. This is nothing more than words and virtue signaling. And we absolutely support our immigrant community. And a woman spoke and asked a specific question. She wanted to know about police involvement. I personally have said from this dais that our police will not be... Have anything to do with the deportation efforts. Absolutely nothing to do with it. So this is nothing more than virtue signaling. There's a lot that's left out of this. And at the end of the day, whatever words want to come forward in a resolution, Tom Homan has also made clear that he will arrest anyone, the mayor, city council members. He will arrest anyone that gets in the way of the administration's deportation efforts. Now, if there's something, you know, that we need to become vocal about or something that we do need to discuss, we can take that up, you know, maybe with ICE. There's channels that we can go through. But whatever we pass here tonight does absolutely nothing, just so the public knows. It does absolutely nothing because the current administration has all of the authority to make the deportations that they want to make. So this is nothing more than virtue signaling.
Yeah, well, I do think, though, it does make a statement for those under DACA, for those under temporary protected status, and for those that are pending their asylum cases. All three categories have a legal status, albeit a temporary status in the country, and that we hope that those statuses not be reversed. I think that's certainly important to the Salvadoran community here that initially came here under temporary protected status. And so I think that it's not... The way this is written right now is not about undocumented immigrants.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
The list of countries here are just the top countries. We couldn't list all of them, of which folks are known to be here based on the census and other data. But I'm happy to add Venezuela. So Ghana, Venezuela, and Nigeria. We can do that to make sure that it includes Venezuelans. Certainly no intention to exclude them there. I do want to clarify, however, that folks can have active deportation orders without having committed any crimes not related to immigration because that there are people with active deportation orders who have not committed any other crime besides crossing the border. So I want that to be on the record.
Is there further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
For our city attorney. Councilmember Durensky brought up a point about we must follow federal law. And it has been stated that mayors, city council officials that don't follow the laws that are put out on deporting people who have committed crimes that are undocumented, that we would be held liable and face jail time. So by supporting what has been presented, are we in violation of that oath?
No.
Okay.
You know, you guys have heard the feedback from the mayor of Denver that has said things about, you know... I don't really want to repeat what he said, but, you know, saying that he was going to resist anything that the federal government... I think it's been pretty clear from council, from the mayor, from the police chief, from the city manager, that federal government's going to do what the federal government's going to do. We're going to be... I mean, for lack of a better term, the city's going to be Switzerland. We're not going to... We're not taking sides. It is not our issue, so...
It's not our issue. That... I guess that's the point of why we're... Like, why are we doing this if we don't have any authority to make any of these decisions? I understand supporting our immigrant community, and I guess, you know, maybe... I don't know. Maybe this just needs to be worked on a little bit more and, you know, delayed for today. And because there's a...
You want to...
There is time. We have a meeting in two... We have a... First of all, Mayor, people are interrupting.
If they continue, we'll go to a virtual meeting. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyway, my suggestion is maybe possibly delay this till our next meeting in two weeks, where we can get the wordsmithing a little bit better so that we are all in agreement and have... Not have division. I think we all on this dais do support our immigrant communities, but we do also have to follow federal law.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
I've accepted every amendment that's been offered, and certainly changed portions that indicate really anything about federal policy. So at this point, this is about, A, making sure we're abiding by our state laws related to, which everyone has said they support, related to not having our local law enforcement enforce immigration laws, as well as, yes, affirming a commitment, and you can call that virtue signaling if you want, but I think there are a lot of people who are scared and who are worried, and for whom saying, yes, we support and value you, is worth something. And the words that we say as leaders matter. So I would rather move forward, if my colleagues really think that there's significant change that needs to be made on this, then I'm willing to wait until the next meeting, but again, I have accepted every amendment that's been brought forward, and there are people who came here for the purpose of supporting this that will now have to come back in two weeks.
Councilmember Mario, and then Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, I just, I, I support this, I supported it, it's original version, I think it's, it's straightforward, we know a resolution is a statement of value, support, either we support our immigrant community or we don't, that's just what it is. We can talk about wordsmithing all we want, the sponsor has, in good faith, accepted those amendments, so you can keep trying to push it away, we've supported resolutions when it's convenient to the majority of this council on things that have nothing to do with city council, we've done that many times, and then we take away that opportunity for others to do that. So this, back to the actual content, is supporting, it is naming the real fear that I know we feel, we hear, the fear that has been instilled by this incoming president, we can't tiptoe around that, those are facts, period. So if we're going to not even be factual, we have to at least recognize it that has caused fear, whatever you believe about those policies, this is a statement of support of our immigrants, period. So I support.
Councilmember Bergen.
I guess I would be asking for another amendment to be added, that we will not interfere with federal law enforcement.
You can ask the
Yes, I mean, we're, we're bound to follow.
I would, I would express it this way, that we will cooperate with federal immigration
Agencies.
Agencies, federal, federal immigration authorities as much as allowed under state and federal law.
As required by law.
As required by law.
Well, as allowed, or as
As required, I would say as required, you know, because there are going to be some things in the law that, that are permissive, that could see, be seen as others that you are fully cooperating with immigration officials, but it's, that's a policy decision for you all, is how, how far you want it to stay, that you will work with immigration officials as much as the law allows, but that's, I don't, how you want to phrase your
No, that's fine, I would phrase it that way, and that I would support it if we have that amendment in there, but otherwise, I would not.
Offered the amendment.
Well, I just did, didn't I?
Did you, okay, is there, I second the amendment.
So
Further discussion on the amendment?
Well, I'm saying, mayor, she made it as a friendly amendment, so.
So I think I, I appreciate the way that Councilmember Bergen phrased it, which is we will not interfere with the enforcement of federal, with federal immigration, or, yeah, with the enforcement of federal immigration law, I think that that's a more clear statement.
Thank you. Mayor.
Councilmember Hancock.
I'm having a hard time, I'm wondering, with this whole exercise here, where is anybody, maybe I'm looking on another, where's anybody got the idea that a rural city, the most diverse city in the state of Colorado, and actually, say, is anti-immigrant?
Mayor, motion to recess, please.
I'm sorry.
Motion, I'm tired of this.
Mayor, doesn't that have to, does that have to be second?
Okay. Been moved by Councilmember Jurenski, but, oh, it's taken by Hancock to recess, do we have to take the vote?
Mayor, clarified, 10 minute recess? 10 minute recess? Okay. I'm not doing a
This is ridiculous.
Is there any objection?
Mayor, so to clarify, we're recessing or we're going virtual? Those are two different things.
We're going virtual.
I don't support that.
That was not the motion.
A motion to go virtual is a different motion, so if you guys want to go virtual now, that would be the motion that'd be appropriate.
I, I thought we were recessing for 10 minutes. It, it allows us to discuss this and maybe get this
Can't discuss it in recess, no, can't discuss it in recess.
Okay, is there objection to a 10 minute recess?
Yeah, I object.
I object.
I object, let's just keep going.
Okay.
So, just for procedurally, Councilmember Bergen offered that friendly amendment, has that been accepted, Councilmember Combs? Okay, and where are we going to put that in the resolution?
Just at the end of section one, I guess?
Okay, Ms. Arterius, as you get the language.
So I have two different sentences, I have will not interfere with federal immigration law, or I have will cooperate with federal immigration authorities as required by state law.
I think it's the first one.
The first one, or first.
Is that correct, Councilmember Combs? Okay, we've got another friendly amendment that's been accepted, so now we're back to discussion now on the amended resolution with this third amendment.
Further discussion?
Call for a question.
It's, Councilmember Hancock moved motion to call for the question.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
It's, who's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bergen, second. Call for the question, on the motion to call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
And this is, the, this motion was to end debate and vote on the main motion immediately.
Yes.
Mayor Protim? Mayor Protim Sundberg?
Mayor votes yes.
Mayor. Councilmember Hancock?
Yes.
Councilmember Hancock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jurenski? The motion passes with nine yes votes to end debate and vote on the main motion immediately.
Call for the question on resolution 1185.
As amended.
As amended.
Mayor, just from my understanding, can you repeat, can, city attorney, can we repeat all the amendments, please? I mean, I really need to know what are all they
I, let me, they're describing, Madam City Clerk, if you mind, reading the, the three friendly amendments that have been accepted.
Yes, I can. Amend the last whereas clause to state the incoming presidential administration has created uncertainty about the future of Aurora residents who are in the United States under the temporary protected status program, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program, or have been placed on humanitarian parole pending the adjudication of their asylum claims. The second one is to amend the commitment to immigrant community section to state the city of Aurora reaffirms its steadfast support to its immigrants, and to add that the city of Aurora will not interfere with federal immigration law.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct, Councilmember Bergen? Okay. Councilmember Combs, is that correct? Call for the question on the adoption of 1185 immigration support, the resolution on immigration
As amended.
As amended.
Mayor Protim Sundberg? Councilmember Hancock? Councilmember Hancock? Councilmember Hancock?
No.
The motion passes with eight yes votes, one no vote, to adopt item 1185.
Laura, now please read the title to 1186.
Item 1186 is resolution 202506, to amend the rules of order and procedure for the Aurora Colorado City Council concerning public invited to be heard, and mayor, we have individuals signed up to speak on this item.
Very well.
Tanya Tabachek?
Good evening, mayor, and, mayor and councilmembers, Tanya Tabachek, living in Aurora, I'm just supporting whoever you guys decide on, if you decide on the public to be heard to be canceled, I'd support that, there's times that I feel like I don't have a voice to be heard, and I, and my mom also has been heckled and made fun of as well, so I just wanted to say I'm going to support you, because everyone has a right to be heard and speak, as well as respecting those that are speaking as well, so that's what I just have to say, thank you.
Erin Futreul?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council, almost didn't make it, that was a really smooth move, Ms. Hancock, and it's really, really upsetting, especially when this council, this city of Aurora, just launched MLK Week tonight, and we're talking about a resolution that does the exact opposite of MLK Junior stood for. A lot of people here on this council that I've met, and I respect, thank you, Allison Combs, you've done a lot for me, especially at MSU Denver, I've had conversations with Honorable Angela Lawson, I've had conversations with Sundberg, I may not disagree with you, but in my lowest points, you actually lifted me up, so I thank you for that. I may not agree with Jurenski, but there are things that I will give you credit for, like cleaning up Nine Mile, I will give you credit for that, but co-sponsoring this amendment, trying to shut up the public, and telling us that we're going to be arrested because we've peacefully assembled and are protecting our First Amendment right, I'm laughing at that, there, there's a whole community out here that are here to support not, not just, not just their views, but the views that you guys have upheld for them. I sat in a meeting with the honorable Mayor Webb a few, a few years ago, and he, he spoke of how he missed the days that DPS students from Manuel, led by A. Anthony Anderson, would, would starve his office and protest peacefully, and that's what we're doing today. Ms. Hancock, you asked that same community to do the same thing for your son, I worked at a halfway house where I read your son's intake and thought he was innocent, and I thought you were doing everything that you could for your son, and I support that, and now you're turning your back on that community? Come on now, that's ridiculous, don't want us to be arrested because we're not going to leave within 10 minutes for voicing our opinions, I think that's ridiculous, and this resolution needs to be amended, have a good night.
That was the last individual to speak.
Okay. Motion is in order for 1186.
First, your mayor, presentation by staff, real quick.
I'm sorry, present, re-presentation by staff.
Or the sponsor, either one, Stephanie, or, sorry, Councilmember Hancock.
Councilmember Hancock.
The purpose of this piece of, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm puzzled by the personal attacks on me from people, just as an aside, you don't know anything about my son, so speaking about him, you have no right to. Secondly, people say things that have nothing with this, they have nothing to do with this. What we're talking about is people who come to this body to present their public invited to be heard, we're not trying to, to eliminate public invited to be heard, what we're asking is for respect and decorum, which continually is violated here, that people continually ask for things that they don't give, we're asking for respect and decorum and decency and order in this chamber and for this body, but it only happens one way. And so clearly, since people are not going to follow the rules, and they're not interested really in participating in what this body does, and how we conduct our business here, and we have a lot of business that impacts everyone in this city here, and if you're really interested in the process and what's going on, then the least you can do is be an active participant by listening and trying to understand what we're doing, not coming in here just to disrupt, throw up on us, and then leave. You know, this is, this is the thing that, we, we want people to be active participants and be involved, we, we want that, but we want, again, here we are, you know, the respect that they want, they're not giving, and so, to me, we have to get through our business, and we don't have time for all these shenanigans throughout the process, so we need to get through our business, and then we can have the time at the end for people to say what they have to say. The grandstanding by other members, you know, of the audience and, and the council is just extremely disruptive and hard, we all have full-time jobs, we all have things that we do, we serve at the good pleasure of this city, and it is our honor to do so, but we're, all we're asking is for respect, we're asking for an opportunity to do the work that we do, so that we can better serve our community, and if that means moving this to the end because of the blatant disruptions that we keep having for the past six months, we just need to be able to, to conduct our business, and that's all this resolution is asking.
And Councilmember Hancock, if I might, I'll just briefly go over the highlights if you'd like me to.
If you would.
So, what the first section does, and Ms. Wood, if you want, do you want me to do it, or you want me?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll go ahead, so, it does move public invited to be heard from the beginning of the agenda to the end, it also does a preference for those Aurora residents who choose to show their ID or utility bill or something that identifies them as a Aurora resident, and everybody else would be put at the end, bottom of the list, if somebody who isn't a Aurora resident does not want, that self-identifies as a Aurora resident with an ID or so forth, they'll still get to speak, with the time limit allows, by putting it at the, the end of the list as they signed up. The last thing it does, it does say, and it directs the city manager, that if city council meeting does become disrupted to the extent that it jeopardizes the council's ability to conduct city business, and you do move to a virtual format, the city manager's directed to order the Aurora Municipal Center closed to the public, and there is a, a rest of the sentence there that says, and all public attendees will be given 10 minutes to vacate, I've spoken to the city manager, and if you'll, I, I'm not in the position to offer a friendly amendment, but we, we'd ask that somebody strike just after the word "public," just period, because each situation could be different, instead of giving a timeline, so we could say, "closed to the public," period.
That will be acceptable to me.
Okay, and I'll, I'll say, Councilmember Bergen offered that. I'm kidding, and then it goes forward to get more direction on what happens if the, the meeting is disrupted, so I know that Councilmember Bergen, I think, has something else.
Yeah, if Councilmember Hancock, did you have anything else before I offer an amendment? Okay, I would like to offer
Mayor, apologies, point of order, I think we need a motion and a second, then we can start offering amendments.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by
Jurenski.
Councilmember Jurenski. Okay, please proceed with the amendment.
Okay, thank you, mayor, so my amendment to, to Councilmember Hancock's resolution, it would remain the same, except that my resolution would read to allow 30 minutes at the beginning of the council meetings, as current, and 30 minutes at the end of our meeting, with residents being prioritized, and then two minutes per speaker, that would allow more speakers to speak. If you have three, that limits the number of speakers, so what this does, I guess I shouldn't negotiate, I'm trying to offer a friendly amendment, instead of putting one hour at the end, to allow 30 minutes at the beginning, and then have 30 minutes at the end, what this does is when you have residents that particularly, may not be able to stay late, depending upon when our meetings end, but maybe they have children, they have to go to school, they have homework, and they can't be here at nine o'clock at night or 10 o'clock at night, who knows how long our meetings might last, so it gives the opportunity to either be there at the beginning, or if you have a commitment from work and you can't be there, you can then speak at the end, so I think it allows more flexibility, and it is what I'm offering as a compromise, so I would like to know if the sponsor would accept this as a friendly amendment.
That's reasonable, thank you.
Okay, very well.
So I need a, a second, I guess, or, no, oh, sorry.
So now the, the resolution's been amended twice, the first one, the strike that all public attendees will be given 10 minutes to vacate the premise, the second one is to change the first part of the public invited to be heard to 30 minutes for Aurora residents.
Aurora residents.
And then the second 30 minutes at the end of the meeting, right after council reports, to be for everybody else for those 30 minutes, and to limit the speaking time to two minutes per speaker.
Yeah.
Further discussion on the Bergen amendment? Oh, two, oh, I'm sorry. Since it's, it's been accepted, so we're to the resolution. Further discussion on, on the resolution?
Mayor.
Um, Councilmember Murillo.
Yeah, um, I think every, I just have seen so many iterations of removing and reducing the public's ability to speak. Um, and I'm deeply concerned. Um, I'm deeply concerned at the direction that this council is choosing to go. Time and time again, we see those opportunities dwindle. Um, I appreciate the amendment to, um, follow some sort of compromise, um, but I don't, overall, I don't, I, I think this is a dangerous direction to go. We keep removing y'all's opportunity to say and to speak to our elected officials. This is the place we have and the opportunity we have to do that. Um, and I'm not okay with that. Um, uh, you know, when it comes to providing proof of residency, I just think that's going to be a mess. We're going to bring your, uh, utility bill to every council meeting, like, people might not be comfortable sharing that information. Like, that just seems like a, an unnecessary burden. Um, want to talk about administrative nightmare, that, that feels like that's what's going to happen. Um, I, I think also we're in this situation, um, we used to have online sign-ups and now we don't even have that. So that's another example of ways in which we're reducing and reducing the public's ability to speak here. And it's not okay. Um, uh, yeah, and I don't always agree with the, the decisions that are made by, you know, everyone who comes here. Um, I don't agree or, you know, share the same way that my colleagues even treat, um, or speak. But if this is about respect, if y'all have been watching long enough, you was, you know that this council is not about respect. Not at all. Not at all. Myself, if we're, you're not in the majority, this council has been vicious. Personal attacks that don't get decorum called on, straight-up lies to the media about what's happening in our city. Nobody's, there's no concern for the truth. Or respect. If we cared about respect, we'd be respectful to one another. I hear the comments...
Mayor?
Back and forth. I'm sorry, I'm still speaking. Um, I hear the comments, the rude, mean, and nasty, petty comments that my colleagues say to one another, that's not respect. This is not about respect. Um, and if, if we are upset that people don't feel heard and feel like this is where they get to speak, then what did we sign up for? We signed up to be public officials and listen to the public. So I, I, I don't agree with the, the, the trajectory that we're on, that we keep reducing our ability of residents to speak. Um, and that, yeah, I, I believe respect does go both way, both ways, but we've seen that respect is not even held amongst our council members. We have to practice what we preach at a minimum. Um, so for that to be any sort of, uh, out there, I, I, I personally disagree with that as the recipient and other of my colleagues who have been blatantly disrespected. Um, and no consistency of rules of how they're enforced, um, here on the dais. So, I, I mean, I could keep going, right? But, um, yeah, I don't, I don't support this. Um, I appreciate the amendment. Um, and I think we need to be concerned and this is a bigger issue than the vote tonight, that we keep reducing our ability to speak to our elected officials. Mayor.
So I absolutely appreciate, um, what my colleague Councilmember Murillo is saying. My preference would be to go back to the way it was when I first got on council, which was unlimited public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting. And that was despite the fact that some of those public comments were hours of people relentlessly attacking me personally. I believe that our job is to listen to the people, no matter what, whether we agree with them or not. So my preference would be for that. I'm not making that amendment because I know it won't pass. Um, I do think that 30 minutes at the beginning and 30 minutes at the end is more than we have now. Um, and so for me, it's, right? I have to acknowledge that I am not in the position on this council to get what I actually want. I'm in the position to get what I can get, and at times that means compromising. And in this case, compromising means twice as much time for members of the public to speak. And it does not eliminate the ability of people who are not residents to speak. It moves residents to the front of the line. Again, I would rather we not, I, I think that's going to be a nightmare for our clerk, frankly, to have to adjudicate that every meeting. So I don't like that either. But what I do appreciate about Councilmember Bergen's amendment is that we at least have time at the beginning and time at the end, and we have twice as much time as we currently have. Um, and so for that reason, I will support Councilmember Bergen's amended, um, version. But I also acknowledge that this is in no way ideal. It's in no way what's fundamentally right. And I very much appreciate and respect the stance that's being taken by Councilmember Murillo.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Murillo.
Um, I think another concern I have, that I alluded to my last very long comment, um, was around being able to sign up virtually. I know that that's, uh, something that we no longer offer. And if we're asking people to be here, I think, at five at this point, you know, get off of work, assuming you even work like a nine-to-five, you have to be here by 5:00 PM to sign up. I feel like that's an impossible requirement. That's such as, that, I think that's removing additional, that's creating an additional burden for people to sign up. So I would like to ask if I could offer that. I know that's not been part of the actual amendment in the past, but can we enumerate that people can sign up online here?
Does that fit under the...
The current, the current rules require those individuals who wanted to sign up for public invited to be heard to start at 5:00 PM and then that lasts until 6:20, uh, because that gives the clerk's office time, uh, to order the speakers and to get them in place. Uh, but that can be changed before in person, right? There was, not, uh, virtually, there were times, uh, I recall that people would sign up, you know, a couple of days in advance and they wouldn't be here. Uh, so, but again, that's, that's part of your rules. You guys can change that if you, if you choose.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Dr. Rinsky.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I mean, a part of this is to try and make sure that Aurora residents are heard. Um, so signing up online, um, I don't know how they would show an ID or, you know, be able to prove their, their residency to have that preference as an Aurora resident, um, to speak first. So I don't see how that can be incorporated into what this entire, uh, resolution is seeking to do.
Mayor. Can I ask a question of the clerk?
And Councilmember Murillo.
So, um, Clerk Rodriguez, do you, when you're verifying petitions or board and commission applications, do you have a manner for identifying whether people are Aurora residents or not that you could utilize similarly for this purpose? Yes, I believe what's in the resolution right now is what's in the city code for us verifying board and commission residence. For petitions, it's a little different. We have to look up them in the Secretary of State because they have to be registered electors. But yes, we do have a, a way in the city code under boards and commissions to see if somebody's a resident.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Murillo.
Yeah, that was going to be my point. Could people email, text? Well, not suggesting, yeah, anyways. But I think there's many other ways that we could prove residency, even though I think that's going to be a nightmare. Plus, if we're trying to, if we only have a short window, is 10 minutes enough for the clerk to be able to turn that over, um, and accurate? First verifying residency, then ordering them, and then having that ready by the start of the meeting? That, to me, also, um, I'm not asking for a response, uh, but I just feel like that's going to be putting, um, a stressful burden on, um, a part of your job that shouldn't be that stressful. You, you have an entire meeting to be working through.
Okay. Councilmember Murillo, are you offering an amendment?
I am offering amendment.
Is it, uh, accepted as a friendly amendment? It is not? Okay, it's, it's been moved by Councilmember Murillo, seconded by...
Combs.
Councilmember Combs. Uh, discussion?
I have a question.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Uh, you were asking that people could sign up online and show proof of residency that way. Was that during that five o'clock to 6:20 timeframe?
I mean, um, I was ideally hoping it'd be a longer timeframe.
If it was during that timeframe, would that, I don't know if that would change the sponsor or the, yeah, whoever was the original.
I mean, can people just sign up online day of?
Mayor and Councilmember Murillo, for agenda items, people can sign up online by 1:00 PM on the day of the council meeting. You can make that similar for public invited to be heard as well.
Yeah, no, um, thank you for that clarification. Now, I think it would just be simpler if people can sign up online day of. So, yeah, virtually, you don't have to be in person to just sign up to speak.
And Councilmember, is there a deadline for them to sign up?
I mean, I would defer to you as the city clerk, but in the past, we've done it right up until the, the start of the meeting, right?
No.
No, for 6:20.
We, I believe we had till noon the day of the council meeting. That way, we had time to consolidate the lists and contact the people. Um, we opened it the Friday before and then had till noon on the day of.
Okay, well, if, yeah, whatever a reasonable timeframe, I don't, I don't know if I'm the right person to give an exact timeline. Again, I defer to what feels feasible. I'm, my, my intent is to give people as much time and flexibility so they don't have to be here in person to just at least sign up.
Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Mayor.
Councilmember Combs.
Um, I would make my support contingent on the ability of folks to sign up online.
Very well. Um, further discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, Bergen. If we could have clarification from our city attorney, um, we were just, uh, talking about how the clerk can coordinate all this. And so if you do the, I, I had asked if we could do the online the day of so that they could sign up, but apparently that is not feasible, is what I'm understanding.
No, we can do the day of. Um, and what is in the council rules right now for agenda items is till 1:00 PM. That's feasible for us to consolidate the public invited to be heard list and reach out to the individuals who are speaking before the meeting. So online till 1:00 PM, and then they can sign up in person as well.
So what, what the process question was is that because they're, they're not signing up in person, that they know that, that the people are here in the council chambers, you guys have to take that extra step of contacting people to make sure, yes, you signed up, you are going to be here and so forth. So if there's 30 people who signed up, you'll be calling 30 people on public invited to be heard if it was virtual?
Oh, right. And we need a deadline as to when people can sign up, if they're going to sign up online.
No, I don't want to do that.
Further discussion?
Call for the question.
If that, yeah, if that makes people more comfortable, we could make that, the, a 1:00 PM, virtual, by 1:00 PM.
The people are saying yes.
Mayor.
Councilmember...
Sorry, just one more thing. But then people still can sign up in person up until 6:20 in addition.
I don't believe, okay, so, um, is there further discussion on the Murillo amendment? I assume it's a, you were asking, is there further discussion?
Yeah, so there, there is one, again, I want to make sure we're clear, because there's something else added there at the end. So I want to know where, is that a friendly amendment, Councilmember Combs, to Councilmember Murillo, that we allow virtual sign up till 1:00 PM, just like we do for agenda items, and then allow still in-person sign-ups between 5:00 and 6:20?
Correct.
And is that accepted? Okay. So there's the, there's the Murillo amendment.
Day of, right?
Day of.
They sign up at night, what? They sign up until 1:00 in the afternoon?
So they can sign up virtually until 1:00 PM, just like the other agenda items?
Day of.
Of the day of, the council meeting, so on Monday.
We still want to verify that Aurora residents have priority?
So that would, again, as Ms. Rodriguez stated, she would then have to take the names, contact them, call them, and then look them up in her system to see if they are Aurora residents in order to put them in the order, um, that they would be in.
Okay. Okay, further discussion?
Okay, call for the question.
Councilmember Bergen.
Question, I'm tired.
Okay, further discussions, seeing none. Uh, call for the question on the Murillo amendment.
Councilmember Hancock?
Trouble.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes with six yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Dr. Rinsky, Medina, and Casal to add the amendment from Councilmember Murillo. So now we need to vote on the entire ord, or the entire resolution with all of the amendments.
Very well. Um, further discussion on 11-86 as amended? Seeing none, call for the question on 11-86 as amended.
The motion passes with seven yes votes, two no votes from Councilmember Medina and Councilmember Murillo to adopt item 11-A6 as amended.
Okay. Uh, would clerk now please read the title to item number 11-B1? No, we already did that. Okay, 11, uh, would clerk now please read the title to 12-A?
Item 12-A is public hearing for consideration of ordinance 2025-01 for a zoning map amendment to rezone 4.285 acres of land to medium-density multifamily District R3 located at the northwest corner of East 22nd Place and Cathy Street.
Public hearing is now, uh, open. Presentation by staff, re-presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stacy Wassinger. I'm senior planner with the planning...
There's probably an inside job.
Uh, planning and business development department. And I am here to present the staff report on this item. The request is to change the zoning of the subject site shown here on the map in front of you, which is east of Tower Road and north of East 22nd Place, approximately 4.2 acres. The applicant is the Living Tower Free Methodist Church and Blue Ridge Atlantic Development. And the request is to change the zoning from business tech I-1 to medium-density multifamily R3. And the intention or, um, proposal for this request is to, um, have the church remain but allow for the development of an affordable senior housing project. Uh, the map in front of you shows the existing current zoning map, um, with the subject property in yellow, zoned I-1, that is R3 zoning to the south and R1 zoning to the east and then I-1 to the north and west. Uh, this is the proposed zoning, showing what the proposed zoning map would look like with, um, just the subject property being changed from I-1 to R3. This map shows the existing Aurora Places Comprehensive Plan Place Type. Um, this property is in the established neighborhood. Properties to the north and west are in the industry hub and south and east are in the established neighborhood. The Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item on December 11th, 2024, and, uh, forwarded a motion, or forwarded a vote to recommend approval 5 to 0 on this item. Uh, with that, I conclude the staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant is also available to speak and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Uh, any questions of staff?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Dr. Rinsky.
Um, I, I just, and, and, you know, I, I don't know if this is the case or not the case, but it's been brought to my attention, um, that the applicant's agent for the rezoning is, well, first, he's a Realtor, um, and he is the senior, the city... is, well, first, he's a realtor, and he is the senior, the city, the senior city planner for the City of Denver wanting to do this project, and he has his own realty company. Is there any conflict of interest there?
No.
I'm not aware of that information, that's news to us. And I think any conflict is with city employees or city officials.
Only for Aurora or for city employees for Denver?
Yeah, for city officials and city employees.
Of Aurora.
Yes, of Aurora, yes, sorry, my apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions of staff, Councilmember Hancock?
Is the church going to manage the senior community, or will it be independently?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The church is, will remain on the site, but it'll be managed by the Blue Ridge Atlantic Development Company. Both, representatives of both the church and the development company are available tonight, though, to answer any questions.
But they will be, they will be separated then?
Correct.
Further questions of staff for the applicant, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, sir. The frontage, yeah, let's see, right in front of the property there on 22nd, is the developer responsible for improving that with sidewalk?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. Correct, there would need to be a site plan review process after this, if this rezon were to be approved, and as part of that, they would be responsible for making all required city improvements, including to the right-of-way and sidewalk.
Further questions of staff or the applicant?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
I just have a question for the city attorney. There was a letter delivered to city council, was that also delivered to be included on the public record for this item? It was regarding the sidewalk issue that Mayor Protem Sundberg had mentioned.
Do we, and I, that's the first time, Councilmember Coombs, I'm hearing about the letter, do we know when it was delivered? Lena?
I do not, Stacy, do you?
The, so, the letter was from someone that lives in the neighborhood to the south, and it was sent to staff yesterday afternoon and sent out this morning to city council and city management.
So, to answer that question, I would believe, yes, it would, it should be part of the record.
Thank you.
You guys can accept and receive in the record the following materials, including the city council meeting itself. How long, how many pages was it? It was two pages?
I have a copy, I can provide it.
Okay, one, one page, you guys can vote to accept it as part of the record.
Mayor, I move to include the letter that was delivered to all of our mailboxes. That's one page long regarding the sidewalks.
Okay, is there, is there objection to making it part of the record? Seeing none, it will be made part of the record then. I'm, I'm sorry, Katie, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue?
No.
Okay, very well. Further questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, um, the public hearing is closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor, I just want to pipe in, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
For affordable housing, we are seeing more partnerships with churches that have land, and it seems to be a mutually beneficial arrangement for those in need of housing, the church, the developer. I believe this is going to happen over at Restoration Christian Fellowship early this, this year, a win-win situation. Let's see, Living Tower Church, I know they're very, it's a small but mighty little church doing a lot of food bank outreach, and I've seen this presentation. It's tastefully, artfully designed, and one main point is that it's senior living. Probably not going to have a lot of traffic racing in and out of there, and their Mazda Miata's or whatever it's going to be, some rocking chair living, Mayor.
I'm moving. Okay, further, um, a motion is in order? Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 12A.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Who do you?
Councilmember Mario to approve item number 12A. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Mario.
Just to Mayor Protem Sundberg's point, I want to make assumptions about how traffic's going to be over there and how, how driving's going to be with our senior living facility.
I hear you, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, question before, says adoption of number 12A, would the clerk please, um, we'll call for the question on the adoption of 12A.
The motion passes to adopt item 12A.
Okay, reports. I will have a town hall meeting this Saturday from 2:00 to 3:30 at the Central Library, right around the corner from here. I know that Chief has got to be presenting his, his plan.
So, you don't have to scan it?
For his public safety plan going forward, and I'll be talking about economic development, and then we'll redevelopment along the Colfax Corridor, Eastern Nittitlari and the Anschutz Medical Center, and there will be somebody there talking about the Aurora Resource Navigation Center and the development thereof. Also, and just on daily activities, instead of going over them here, in terms of the, what I've done over the last couple of weeks, or last four weeks, please go to my Facebook page, @MikeKaufman, Facebook. Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone who has come out and been patient to wait and have the opportunity to speak. And I, at least, am grateful that there will be some time at the beginning of the meeting moving forward, for that to continue to happen. Just upcoming, what was kicked off today is the 39th Annual City of Aurora Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration, was kicked off today with an opening celebration. Tomorrow, we'll have a At the Table with Dr. King virtual program from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, an Aurora Speaks Poetry and Prose Reading at the Aurora History Museum, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. January 17th, the Interfaith Breakfast at Quebec Place at Fairmount, 8:30 to 10:00 a.m., as well as a Community College of Aurora Film Festival at 6:00 p.m. that day. Saturday, January 18th, there will be a service project, 8:30 to 10:30 at MLK Library, followed by a wreath laying ceremony, and a youth talent show will be held at the Community College of Aurora Center Tech campus. And then Monday, January 20th, the MLK Parade and MLK Junior African-American Heritage Rodeo. In addition, that day, I will be, again, joining Brother Jeff in the statement that no one should be hungry, period, which includes both preparing and delivering meals. So, if folks are interested in volunteering to prepare meals, you can go to brotherjeff.com, or if you are interested in receiving a meal either in person in Aurora Denver or for delivery, both of those things can be signed up for at brotherjeff.com.
Councilmember Mario, I'm sorry, Councilmember Drinsky.
No report.
Councilmember Mario.
Thank you, Mayor. I, two things. My first town hall will be next Thursday, January 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. at Morehead Recreation Center. We'll have a special presentation from a contractor named Puma. They are doing a feasibility study along the Colfax Corridor to look into different mechanisms to facilitate growth and development, which includes a business improvement district, downtown development authority, and potentially a community development corporation. There's a lot of pros and cons to these different mechanisms, so I really invite you all to join and learn more about what those could be and what the impact will be. Wanted to say thank you to Sibley from Ethiopia. I was there for the Orthodox Christian Christmas buffet this last weekend and had some really delicious Ethiopian food and got to meet another Ward One business owner. And, you know, want to continue to support our different businesses. She expressed some frustration that her rent continues to go up from the landlord that she runs from, so hopefully going to put her in touch with our Small Business Development Center, but I'm, I'm hearing that really often from a lot of our small business owners. We have a lot of small business owners that are not also the property owners of their buildings, so, you know, to be determined if anything materializes, but I really feel for that pressure and that frustration. She's had a business, it was a packed house, and has had a business in Aurora for such a long time. I would hate for that to push her out, so I just wanted to say thank you for the invitation, and I look forward to returning in the future.
All right, Mayor Protem Sundberg.
Thank you, sir. Tomorrow in Murphy Creek, Councilwoman Bergen, I think you're going to be there for their task force, buildup task force of a future ballot initiative, trying to raise 700 million-plus dollars to improve our bridges and roads in the future. Murphy Creek, 10:00 a.m. Councilwoman Drinsky and myself, and Councilwoman Hancock's husband worked hard at a Soldiers' Angels' Food Bank event in the cold, met a lot of great people, thanks Raytheon for donating numerous pallets of food for that. And, let's see, we, she'll tell you more about it, Councilwoman Hancock will do a much better job, but we were able to honor two female veterans in their 90s, 97, I think. You'll, you'll tell more specifics about that, but that was, that was an honor, Colonel and a Lieutenant Colonel.
Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, sir. I have my town hall tomorrow at the Central Library from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and we'll be talking about prose updates and things that are happening in Ward 3. That's it.
Councilmember Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. I had my first town hall of the year the other day, and about 60 people came, it was really great. Emma Knight did a presentation on homeless services and what they're doing and working with the navigation campus and the efforts that they're helping to do to help folks that are unhoused to find gainful employment and housing, that's very important, to what Councilmember Protem Sundberg talked about. We honored at St. Andrew's Independent Living Facility two 97-year-old Colonels, and you were there also, Mayor, Lieutenant Colonel Martha Baker and Colonel Alberta Nelson, both 97 years old. They were honored by the National Women's Memorial honoring military women who have served. And those of you who may not know this, there is a National Women's Memorial in Washington, D.C. that honors any woman who served, whether you serve six months or 25, 30 years, they honor you in Washington, D.C. There are millions of women veterans who don't realize that they have the same benefits as male veterans, and they don't take advantage of those benefits. So, if you know a woman veteran, let her know that she does have benefits that she has earned and that her service is valued and important. My next quarterly town hall will be in April, and I will announce that, and that's the conclusion of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm going to give my legislative update. The Colorado Legislative Session started last week on Wednesday. The Pfizer Committee has already met and started taking positions on several pieces of legislation. That will be reported to the study session on January 27th. Notable topics for this year include the budget, public safety, specifically sentencing and affordable housing. The city will be closing, following the legislature, to ensure that the interests of the city and our community are represented. The city will also start identifying projects to present for congressional project, project funding, and will be brought to the council for approval in the upcoming weeks. February 8th, I'm going to start my town halls. I will have from, at Heather Gardens from 10:00 to 11:30, and then February 11th, they, it will be from 6:30 to 8:00 at Mission Bejo. Our topic is going to be getting to know our city attorney's office with Pete Schulte. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to extend my thoughts and prayers to the victims of the fires in the Los Angeles area. My husband and I lived in the Los Angeles area, actually in one of the evacuation zones. We lived there for 10 years, and so, a lot of, we, you know, I think, I can't remember what the, the death toll is, but I believe at least 16 people have lost their, their lives, and then, of course, 10, over 10,000 structures have been lost, so thoughts and prayers to the L.A. region. And then, as Councilmember Sundberg, or Mayor Protem Sundberg mentioned, I will be at the Murphy Creek Clubhouse tomorrow morning from 10:00 to 11:00. I sit on the infrastructure task force, and just wanted to note that this is the kickoff tomorrow to kick off that effort, but we will, throughout the rest of 2025, be doing public engagement to get the public's input on the capital needs and then how to go about funding those very necessary infrastructure needs. And then, lastly, my town hall is this Wednesday evening from 6:00 to 8:00. It is at the Southeast Recreation Center, the focus will be on public safety, and I have Chief Todd Chamberlain will be there and be presenting. I imagine I will also have representation from the Fire Department, from Aurora Fire Rescue, as I've had a few constituents already reach out about concerns about the fire, or about fire danger, wildfires in Colorado, due to what happened in California. And that's it, thank you.
Well, I just want to thank our firefighters. In fact, there was a crew that went, that is in, on the ground in the Los Angeles area right now, helping out, and so, I'd like to thank firefighter Michael LoMastro, engineer Chris Burnall, Captain Jeremy Soens, and Lieutenant Brent Servas, who all volunteered to go there at the request of FEMA, and my prayers are with them that they safely return from that deployment. With that, public invited to be heard.
Eric Shanholzer.
He asks if I could sit up front? Well, it's been a while. I hope everybody had a good holiday season, time to get back to work, except for our new member, he seems to have left. I have been reminded recently of a book written by a very smart dude called Words Mean Things. You see, there are people who are trying to win debates by obfuscating the issues and changing the definition of words. I will use the word immigrant in this example. The dictionary, dictionary definition is noun, immigrant, plural noun, immigrants, a person who comes to live permanently in a foreign country. The obfuscation comes when folks lump all immigrants together. People like my grandfather, who immigrated from Greece, Councilmember Bergen's mother came from France, our new council member came from Ethiopia, and Mayor Protem's wife, I don't know where she came, but she's, she's an immigrant too. This country is founded by immigrants who came to us with the intention of not only improving their own situation, but by improving their adopted home. They assimilated, they learned the language, they learned what a mile is instead of a kilometer. Now, the other type of immigrant, the folks who do not go to the process to come here the right way, the ones who are not concerned with improving their new home, just improving their own situation, the people who came here because Americans have more money to steal than the folks back home. We used to call these people illegal immigrants, but the obfuscators came back and said, how can a person be illegal? Then they countered it with undocumented. The obfuscators cannot abide the knowledge that these people are criminals. They are not the people painting our houses or digging our ditches or picking our kale. These immigrants are raping, murdering, kicking people out of their homes so they can change someone else's rent there. These are bad people. The old countries don't want them, so they came here. They came here because the obfuscators will not put them in prison. They will not send them back. For some reason, they want the bad immigrants to live among us, to plunder our country, our state, and our city. So, there it is. The obfuscators continue to... The obfuscators continue to change the definitions of words. Now it's no longer undocumented, now they are newcomers. The rest of us must stop and think, remember what words mean, and expose the obfuscators and arrest, prosecute, and get the criminal aliens off of our street. Thank you.
Loranda James.
For those who don't know who I am that's online and in this room, I am the mother of Kylan Lewis. My son was murdered by Aurora Police Officer Michael Deeks while he was in kneeling position. And just to find out, I just found out not long ago that Michael Deeks was cleared of all charges. The murder of my son was not an isolated incident. It was a tragedy rooted in a system that had repeatedly failed families like mine. Behind every statistic is a story. Behind every report is a life that will never be the same. My son's life, my family's life, and countless other lives that has been torn apart. The Aurora Police Department recorded 757 use of force incidents in the most recent report, a staggering 21% increase. But let's strip away the numbers for a moment. These aren't just statistics. These are parents whose children don't come home, siblings who lost their best friends, community that grieves while other, those responsible return to work without consequence. My son would never come home to us again. 70% of officers behind these incidents are white. It is no coincidence that in the moments where compassion was, and de-escalation was desperately needed, force was chosen instead. My son needed protection, but he received brutality. How can we trust a badge that has become a weapon against us? Because of what happened to my son, the badge is no longer a symbol of protection, not in my book. It's a symbol of danger, of fatality and loss. This isn't about a few bad apples. It's about a diseased tree, a system that allows this kind of harm to continue without interruption, a system that turns its back on accountability, a system that has normalized the use of force over the act of care. We are not asking for change because it's convenient. We are demanding it because it is vital. This is a fight for our survival, for our dignity, dignity and for our children. Every voice raised, every tear shed, every story shared, it matters. The time for action is not tomorrow, it's right now. Silence is no longer, hear me when I say this, no longer an option. I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank Allison and Crystal for using their voice in the recent section that I was not here on, but I seen it online. That warmed my heart as a mother who continues in this fight. Kylan's life deserved more than just my tears and our tears. He deserves the fight that we should be doing this alone. Each of you should be fighting with us. Ms. Patton, please uphold your oath and take a stand for justice. Disintegrate injustice, demote and remove these officers. Thank you.
Robbie DeYoung. Robbie DeYoung.
My name is Robbie DeYoung. I have been a resident of the city of Aurora for 26 years. I just wasted 12 seconds of the two minutes you proposed to give us to talk at a later point. The disrespect, I've already talked about this once, but the disrespect that not only do you guys show between each other, but to your constituents as well. You want us to get a group of us together at 30 minutes at the beginning and 30 minutes at the end, and you've got to figure out how to divide them and how to divide who's from what city and who's from where. I had to get an Uber to come here tonight because my vehicle isn't working. Now, if I have to be here at 5 o'clock in order to be able to speak, if I have to be here at 5 o'clock in order to speak, and you're saying, oh, well, now we can do it where we can do it online and we can do it by 1:30. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear when that opening starts, when we can start making it and when we can end making it. So I'd like that cleared up. But we need to all have more respect and more consideration for each other than what we are showing here. We're adults, we're not children. Do you understand that? Every one of you, we're adults, not children. I have had, there were so many things I wanted to talk about, but as I got to listen to what everything went on tonight, I am disgusted. There are people out here that have something to say and two minutes won't do it, three minutes barely does it. And you want to give us a time limit and work us around your time, when you can sit up here and you can talk as long as you want on the subject. But we can't. We can't say what we have to say. Grow the hell up!
Medean Shoffner.
You all would rather change a rule for public comment than institute change in a policing system that is killing people in the street. We sat and watched you literally debate, pretend, be performative, tokenize your new person, and speak in ways as if your rule is going to stop us from making sure that we use our voice. It doesn't matter what rule you come up with. Vote on it so we know, because I'm going to tell you that when you are doing right, there's no rule that is going to stop you. There's no rule. Because we strategize, then we organize so we can decolonize. And I want to take this moment one time to just congratulate Mr. Preston Nun for being awarded $400,000 for the brutality that the police, your policing system, has given to him. And in addition to that, I hope that each and every one of you understand, because it was not lost on me, that there is an arrest that is now instituted in this new rule. We have been coming week over week over week letting you know that your Aurora Police Department does not know how to civilly engage with the community. So what you just did tonight, I'm sure every civil rights attorney was eager to see how you voted tonight. You had, you might as well sign a blank check to every civil rights attorney in Colorado and get ready to bankrupt this city. Because that is what is going to happen, I can assure you of that. And Stephanie, this was your idea. I would have never thought that you would have found a loophole for reparations to be paid to the black community. I ought to never put that on you. Because that is what you've just done. You have, reparations comes in many forms, and you have now found a loophole for the black community to collect reparations on the Aurora City's budget. Because again, we strategize, we organize, so we can decolonize. Kylan Lewis still deserves justice, and there is not one rule that you can come up with in the high-capacity job with low-capacity people mindset that you throw into this. There's no rule that you're going to come up with that is going to stop us from demanding justice. I noticed that none of you attended the Martin Luther King celebration that was right here in this hall. Meetings, my ass. I have meetings too. So if your meeting was keeping you from honoring a man that you are supposed to represent, you should be ashamed of yourself. And check your decorum, because I didn't ask you a question.
Kayola Lewis.
I'm just going to say praise God. Seriously. You know, I'm going to go ahead and read from this really quick. Allison, Crystal, this does not apply to y'all. Y'all are in the safe zone. So what I'm about to read tonight, do not take this as a threat. Take this as something that's happened previously in history. Just yield the results that happened. So first of all, officers did not respect the sanctity of life. Officers broke protocol regarding the use of force, the use of force policy. Officers did, did not allow the, any, an alias, anyway, time, time, anyway. They didn't allow the rights, the right objectives to detain officers were not in a state of duress when lethal force happened. So they killed my brother eight seconds after pulling up. My brother had a cell phone and some fruit snacks. Anyway, let's keep it moving. You know, so right now, right now, I'm going to read from the Book of Esther. It says, Mordecai sent this reply to Esther. Don't think for a moment that because you in the, in the palace, you will escape when it's all done with the Jews, with the other Jews. Once they are killed, if you keep quiet at this, at a time like this, deliverance and relief for the Jews will arise from some other places, but you are, you and your relatives will die. Who knows if perhaps you were made queens for just a, for just a time such as this. Y'all are all, again, not you Allison, not you Crystal, y'all are all in a place of high caliber, right? Y'all have things that you could do to change a lot of stuff, but y'all choose to allow this destruction on purpose, right? You know, finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if any, is excellent or whatever you have learned or received or heard from me. This is actually the prophet. This is who we're speaking about right now. We're in the Book of Philippine, Philippines, sorry. Think about such things, heard from me or seen in me. Put it into practice and the God of peace will be with you. Allison, Crystal, y'all have nothing to worry about. It's these people that's actually on the face of force.
Robert Lewis.
I'm Robert Lewis. I'm the father of Kylan Lewis. I just want to say to the rest of you people that sit up here and act like you don't have no sense, sense will be given to you in hell. But I'm here to tell you that this has been a murder, a straight-out murder that shouldn't have happened. You had this racist cop off. When you, these people have been doing this from time one, and it's time to change. It's been time to change. A lynch mob needs to be created between police like this. This is ridiculous, how you need to shoot a man with a phone and a candy, whatever. And he's supposed to have all these years in the police force and knowing what you do and who has a gun and who doesn't have a gun. You followed my son for two days. You don't know what kind of pain I'm in, but I have to fight this pain every day to keep from killing this stupid-ass cop. But I'm telling you, it's got to change, and if it doesn't change, I'm going to help change it. And I mean that to my soul. I'm tired of coming up here every damn day, every weekend, every time I got to talk to people that don't understand this hurts. This is not something I want to do every day on Monday. But this cop got off, and he better keep his ass behind a desk. Because if he runs across my path, I will have something to do with it. And I'm just tired of coming up here. I just want to let y'all know that.
Anna Sosa. Anna Sosa.
I'm tired of coming too. You guys know who I am, you know where I'm from. Not a resident of Aurora yet. I will be by the end of the year. This is regarding the sanctity of life. Officers did not respect the sanctity of life. Officers broke protocol regarding the use of force policy. Officers didn't allow the inalienable rights to judicial due process. Officers did not comply with the main objective to detain. Officers were not in a state of duress when lethal force was used. I'm going to read this from the APD website regarding the use of force. The policy of the Aurora Police Department is that sworn members use force in a manner that reflects recognition and awareness of the sanctity of human life while serving the public with professionalism, respect and courtesy. Appropriate and unbiased use of physical force is essential in building public trust and therefore should only be used when other means would be ineffective or are not practical under the circumstances. Sworn members shall employ the minimal amount of force required to overcome the level of resistance or threat encountered and control the situation. Is that what happened? Did any of that happen? You guys know what happened, that's not what happened. I'm going to read some Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. quotes since you guys are pretending to celebrate him. "We know through painful experience that freedom is never volunteered by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed. Justice too long delayed is justice denied. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And that means your justice too, your freedom, your lives by denying this family justice, you're, you're denying yourself, all of you, because it's all going to come back to you. Karma's a... "An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." That goes to you, Mr. Kaufman. "An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." You guys do not care about humanity. You care about white lives, privilege. We know who you protect and it's not us. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort..." "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Where do you stand? "I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." Do the actions of, do your actions and the actions of APD show that all men are created equal?
I'm a resident of Centennial, and it has been 235 days since Kylan Lewis has been murdered by APD. And according to police scorecard.org, 15 to 16% of Aurora's population is black, but it makes up a 37% of arrests. And despite 67%, the majority of all arrests, being nonviolent offenses, 40% of people killed by APD are black. And I shouldn't have to read a statistic to prove to you that shooting a man with his hands up is proof of how racism runs through our systems. We shouldn't have to tell you why Kylan Lewis's murder was unjust. APD has been killing innocent members of the community for decades, and time after time again, people have banded together to prove it. And you people in power do not listen. And I said it last time and I'll say it again. You can quote revolutionaries, and you can say prayers, and you can give empty land acknowledgements, and build museum exhibits of civil rights movements to show your progress, but you and your APD's actions are consistently in line with the wrong people. And on our upcoming celebration of Martin Luther King Day, this is nothing short of hypocrisy, and it disgusts me. Making sure that these illegal immigrants stay in their own place? Making sure that we're being civil when one of us has been murdered? Making sure that you are just following orders when millions of us are being threatened? And about following orders? No matter what the circumstances are, a month is not enough to give anyone the time to find secure housing. And that is what was given to the tenants of CBZ management. It is not enough time to find housing when you're paid below minimum wage. It's not enough when you're not guaranteed human rights, as evidenced tonight. And it's not enough when you're in a country that was built on enacting violence on black and brown bodies. It is a clear disregard for these vulnerable tenants who are already facing violence and discrimination from last year's racist scapegoating, and are about to experience an administration that promises mass deportation. You talk about people who are suffering from the LA fires. They're right now suffering from predatory landlords, and the predatory landlords are doing the exact same thing to the people here. We can't have this hypocrisy. I would like to use the rest of my time to leave a short prayer for Kylan Lewis in my own term, which is to say, I hope that every bit of energy and anger tonight, and every bit of love and hope that we all have for each other is what binds us together as we walk into this new year and protects us against the division that you guys are trying to sow against us.
Hello, I'm Kylan Lewis's grandmother. When they told us that Kylan had been killed, they invited us to a room over here, and they had the video of it. So we all came here, and we looked at the video. And he was getting out of his car, and he was six foot two, handsome man. He got, they, they said, "Get out your car, get out your car," they kept hollering at him. So he got out of his car here, his cellphone in his hand, and candy in his other hand. He said, "I haven't done anything. I haven't done anything. I don't have anything." He kept pleading, and all of a sudden, they shot him in the stomach, and he went down. That tore my heart. And they said they wanted him for questioning. Why, how can you question a dead man? They had, they... They had all kinds of police there, the SWAT, and they had this, the Officer Deeks there. And to this Officer Deeks, they shot him in the stomach. And he went down. I have loved ones that died, but this took me to the core of seeing what they did on their police cam to my grandson. And I don't know if he committed any crimes or any others that, or none of that. But if he did, you can't be judge and jury and just kill the person that you think might have committed a crime. That's not the way it works. It's not the way it's supposed to work. I got a degree in criminology in the seventies, and one professor, she was teaching, she says, "You have, police officers are hiding behind a badge. They're really criminals themselves, but they hide behind a badge." And she says, "And we have a lot of good police officers, but here and there you'll find one that needs the power, and he hides behind the badge to do what he wants to do in his heart." She never lied. That is true. So this is really devastating to me. It's been happening across different states, but it's worse than Aurora. And looking at what they've done to black people, black unarmed people. I could see these were gang members or something like that. But these people are not, they're unarmed. And they're just taking their life, taking their lives away. You know, they should have to pay for the crimes that they commit. They chose to help the people stop crimes. They're criminals behind, hiding behind a police badge and do their dirty work, and that's discrimination. When I look back at Nazi Germany, and I read the history, and the police would go into the ghetto where the Jews were, and they would take these young men off, and they'd never see them again. So Hitler gave, told the Jews that they leave Germany, and the rich ones said, "Oh no, we're not gonna leave, they're not gonna do anything to us." And soon as they said that, the Stapo was at their doorstep, taking their banks, taking their, their banks, taking their jewelry, taking their art and stuff. And this is when I feel that some of this feels like Nazi Germany coming up against people that, the Jews, that they didn't like, and they wanted power. So that, that breaks my heart. But it's just that people have been killed since Kylan. Few women, black women have been killed and stuff. We need to stop this and just keep bleeding. And I said before, it's like a dentist. A dentist will go and look in your mouth, and he'll see a tooth decay in there, and they'll go and clean that decay out and fill it with a better material. That's what you need to do with these police officers that are taking people's lives away. You need to clean it out. You need to clean that out, so we can move on and start a better America, to the republic in which we stand, one nation under God. Are we one nation under God? You're killing people that you don't want here, and then you're getting ready to do away with the, the people that are coming across the border. It's just ridiculous. But I pay, put my people a lot, because we were not immigrants, we were stolen people. We helped build the White House, we helped build things, and we were, we were, folks were in slavery. And then when they got out of slavery, they promised them 10 acres of the mill. That never really happened, but our people suffered. And I, I, when I take, look at this and I see what's happening, not just my grandson, other people, blacks, browns, that don't have guns, and they just need some help. It's just terrible. It just breaks my heart, when I saw my grandson going down like that. It was just too much. And no, they didn't need all these police officers there. And they didn't even say anything or do anything. I don't understand. I really don't understand. And if I, if he had committed any crime or anything, and they found out, and they thought, arrest him, arrest him, and if I'm guilty and I don't have a judge and jury, but you don't come and take somebody's life because you think this might be, or that might be. His life was more important than that he left two sons
Thanks Grandma, it's a fitting lead-in. In April 1945, as the Allies were making inroads through occupied Germany, an all-black regiment of General Patton's army liberated the Buchenwald concentration camp. My grandfather, who would eventually move to Aurora, was liberated that day. He was 17 years old and had never seen a black person in his life until the army that liberated him. Earlier tonight, Aurora hosted an event right outside this room to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream and legacy. The truths of this country are complicated, difficult, often contradictory to the principles we claim to hold dear. At the beginning of this meeting, some of you pledged allegiance to the American flag. But unlike the stripes on the flag, in America, justice is uneven. The truth is that Kylan Lewis, not unlike Dr. King, not unlike my grandfather's mother and sister, perhaps not unlike Jesus Christ himself, led a life of peace, and all were rewarded by being executed by the state. The stories of the hands that built this country, as people stolen from their homes, as unpaid, sometimes underpaid laborers, as American soldiers whose black or brown or indigenous skin made them ineligible for the benefits of the GI Bill. Those stories are so often washed away when we talk about America as a beacon on a hill. You all know this, of course. Just as you know that modern policing is a cancerous outgrowth of the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850. Every member of this council chose business as usual, instead of attending the MLK event in the lobby tonight. Just as each of you has been aware, the Kylan Lewis's family has waited 235 days to be acknowledged by their elected representatives. Say his name.
Ain't gonna let no council turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Ain't gonna let no council turn me around. I'm gonna keep on marching, keep on talking, keep on protesting, marching to the freedom land. The murder of Kylan Lewis was not an isolated incident. Aurora Police Department use of force practices reveal a deep and systemic inequities disproportionately harming black lives, supported by your own documented facts. In your own recent use of force report, 39% of the individuals subjected to police force were black, despite black residents only making up 16% of your population in the city of Aurora. Black individuals are nearly 2.5 times more likely to experience use of force in the city of Aurora. This disparity is not because black people commit more crimes, because studies show that black individuals are no more likely to commit crimes more than others. That the overpolicing of black communities, implicit bias and systemic practices treat blackness as inherently suspicious. You've saturated black communities with law enforcement to continuously uncover crimes within communities, but that is just simply not true. 70% of officers involved in use of force incidents are white, highlighting the racial disparity in policing. 75.6% of the subjects involved in these incidents show no signs of alcohol impairment. 87.15% of these subjects were not under the influence of drugs. And officers are oft, often choose to escalate rather than to deescalate, revealing an ongoing systemic problem where the black community is seen as a threat. We are tired of the goalpost moving. There's a reason why I started the way that I did, because just as my ancestors, elected officials before them moved the goalpost. Ain't gonna let no council turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Ain't gonna let no council turn me around. Keep on marching, keep on...
Stephen Elkins?
Good evening, my name is Stephen Elkins, and I'm a resident of Aurora's Ward One. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about accountability. It is the core of human relationships and their relationships with the institutions that serve them. Without accountability, we can neither grow nor change. Without growth and change, we miss out on the very best parts of what it means to be human. And in missing out, we are disconnected from each other, our city, and the world around us. If the Edge at Lowry crisis has taught us anything, it is that accountability matters now more than it ever has in Aurora. Twice I've invited the Chief of Police to meet with the Mayberry Safety Collective, many of whose members live in close proximity to the Edge. The most recent invitation was in the hours following the kidnapping and the torture of Edge residents for a meeting that following Saturday. I also invited our city manager to that meeting. To date, I have received no response from either the chief or the city manager or their employees about this invitation. Councilmember Jurinsky came to our meeting, where she led an open discussion with neighbors who have been most affected by the Edge at Lowry crisis. We thank her for it. Another member reached out to the Chief of Police about her online petition to add ShotSpot or similar technology to our gunfire-plaked neighborhoods. To date, she has received no response. I would like to share some wisdom I learned from a dating app. No response is a response. With no response from our city bureaucracy, this lack of response is unfortunately a response. And what that response tells us is that without communication, the city and its residents will continue to diverge on the real issues we, the citizens, face every day in our neighborhoods with a trust-the-data mindset driving our city's decisions instead of our citizens' very real experiences. Too often, I hear from our city bureaucracy, "We don't ever hear anything from Ward One residents." Well, when our city bureaucracy won't respond to us, why would we respond? Well, when our city bureaucracy won’t respond to us, why would we respond to our city bureaucracy? A relationship is built on trusted communication. Without them, there can be no relationship. And this relationship between Ward 1 residents and the city bureaucracy will only grow more vital as the city prepares to plan for the Colfax Corridor and the redevelopment of Lowry. To our city bureaucracy, we, the citizens, need you to do more and better to build trust and communication. That can be as simple as returning an email, or it can be as complex as the city posting the email addresses and phone numbers of its employees on its website so we, the citizens, can have a fighting chance at reaching the city bureaucracy. We should not have to spend additional time using internet search engines in a vain attempt to find out how to contact you for ourselves. Our employees’ contact information should be accessible to our citizens. The absence of that information is another barrier to overcome as we attempt to engage our municipal government. Thank you.
V Reeves?
My name is V Reeves with House Keys Action Network Denver, and I’ve been working with and getting to know the workers and families living in the former CBZ-managed buildings, the very people that Danielle Jurinsky has made her personal mission to vilify and endanger on a local and national scale. Earlier today, CBZ and the city of Aurora had a court case. Finally, some justice, perhaps? The criminal Zev Baumgartner with many years-long track record, who led an infant dive toxicity in his New York building, who evicted hundreds of senior citizens in Colorado Springs just to renovate and raise rent in their buildings, who now hired a PR firm with ties to AIPAC to fabricate and hyperbolize the notion of a Venezuelan gang takeover, appealing to a sick eugenics wet dream that has slipped the white hood over the eyes of far too many in this country. But was there justice today? Far from it. Despite Zev’s lawyer being replaced without court approval and failing to show up until the city attorney called his personal number, something a poor black or brown person could never hope to have happen and still be walking free. Ultimately, it was decided that the emergency call to shutter the buildings and evict hundreds of families and their children would happen in 28 days.
28 days!
28 days. Sure, your press conference afterwards, which turned away the tenants themselves who showed up, mentioned that you’d be working to meet tenants’ demands, but 28 days? Time was one of those principal demands: to secure childcare and work time off, to visit housing, to fill out applications in a different language, to acquire income verification, to apply, to pay hundreds, to be denied, to rinse and repeat countless times for hundreds of employment hours missed and thousands of dollars wasted. 28 days. So for these families who have yet to be notified officially by any city entity of any impending date, they have only 28 days, but the lawyer who wasn’t even in the court, who didn’t even, wasn’t even approved to be his lawyer, who doesn’t show up, who didn’t file his documentation, he gets 42 days to do so? So 42 days to file paperwork and a little over half of that to uproot your entire lives?
28 days!
28 days. So here’s my invitation: stand by your immigration support resolution and collaborate with us, because I have 22 appointments this week with terrified families who want to move out in seven days before they might be disappeared by the next presidency. They want safe and dignified housing for themselves and for their children, to care for their sick and to love like you love your own. 28 days, but we have to start today. Please be louder than the most hateful among you. Please make your actions even louder still. Thank you.
Ernesto Cigada?
On this date, January 13, 1913, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded by 22 women at Howard University. We were founded on principles of sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. One of the things I saw tonight, and I was going to go different in my talking points, was sisterhood, when a grandmother stood up here and spoke with her heart breaking about her grandson. Not once did I see the comforting from this council. And that hurts me. We talk about respect. Respect has to be given all across the board. Tonight, I agreed with someone that I’ve seen opposition with in this council many times, and that was a community member by the name of Robbie. Robbie’s gone now, but I wanted her to know and to go back and see this. Every powerful thing that she said, I resonate with. And to answer your question, Mayor, not only am I a resident of Aurora, I have a business in Aurora, I have a bus card in Aurora, I have a utility bill in Aurora, I have Aurora in my life. But it saddens me to come to these council meetings and not hear anything about the wonderful work that is being done in Ward 5. That saddens me. I get legislative reports, I get those updates, and although those things are important, I would love to hear about the great things that are happening in Ward 5, the great things that we used to hear about when Allison Coombs was Ward 5 represented, the great things that we know that are going on with our residents that we don’t see beyond Heather Gardens. There’s more to Ward 5 than just Heather Gardens. I’d like to see a new council member, Cassan, who was elected, stay for the whole constituents. You’re at large, we’re all your community, but yet he’s gone with his community. And we talk about diversity, we talk about immigrant supporting. To shorten our time, we’ll shorten the life and stance of this community, but I expect nothing less from any of you. I haven’t been coming to council meetings because just like the loss of Kylan Lewis’s mother, losing her son, I lost my father. And it saddens me to stand before this council that shows no empathy for families, for community. I don’t see any change with this council. I don’t see any change with this community. I’m sad to be an Aurora resident, and it hardens my heart that we ask for the same things from this body, but you won’t even implore them among yourselves. I leave you with this: I pray that God places something on your heart to change.
Honestly, it’s hard to even know what to say here. But when I walked in and saw your little, there was a dance going on for Martin Luther King Jr., I thought I would bring some of his words here to you because they directly apply to most of you. “We can never be satisfied as long as the Negro is the victim of unspeakable horrors of police brutality. No, no, we are not satisfied, and we will not be satisfied until justice rolls down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. You come here and you don’t want to talk about any of that. Instead, you praise weapons manufacturers for buying you dinner.”
Chicken!
Sounds like a bribe, and you made sure to make it public. While you offer thoughts and prayers for victims of unprecedented wildfires made inevitable by climate change, you fully support the U.S. military and investments in foreign militaries while the U.S. military is the single largest user of fossil fuels on the planet. You say you won’t cooperate with ICE, but you will follow federal law. How can you ever expect anyone to believe you when you let your cops kill your constituents? Back to MLK Jr., about the arrest of someone that’s in this room. You deplore the demonstrations taking place, but your statement, I’m sorry to say, fails to express a similar concern for the conditions that brought about the demonstrations. I’m sure none of you would want to rest content with the superficial kind of social analysis that deals merely with effects and does not grapple with underlying causes. It’s unfortunate that demonstrations are taking place, but it is even more unfortunate that the city’s white power structure left the community with no alternative. And lastly, this is from a speech, “Proud to be maladjusted. There are some things in our society and some things in our world for which I am proud to be maladjusted, and I call upon all men of goodwill to be maladjusted to these things until the good society is realized. I must honestly say to you that I never intend to adjust myself to racial segregation and discrimination. I never intend to adjust myself to religious bigotry. I never intend to adjust myself to economic conditions that will take necessities from the many to give luxuries to the few, leave millions of God’s children smothering in an airtight cage of poverty in the midst of an affluent society.” I too was at the court case today for the residence of a local apartment building, and I’ve been to that complex in the past for another part of this, I don’t know how to describe it, a reign of terror against them, brought by a president who is promising to do things that none of you would have ever proposed, with a member of this council and the chief of police in this town, who stood on stage with him and locked arms. I don’t know if you’re going to stand with us next week or in the four following years, but we’re going to keep standing.
Shannon Peterson? Shannon Peterson?
Ted D., not a resident. I want to start with a quote by Danielle Jurinsky. It doesn’t apply to Allison or Crystal. I hope you have miserable fucking lives. I might make that happen for a few of you. Fuck you! And that is really a quote by Danielle right here. It’s classy, huh? “I’m here today to plead for basic human decency. I’m asking that the city doesn’t approve of kicking people and families onto the street in the middle of winter. You really want children on the streets? Something’s really wrong with what’s going on here, and I’m not sure if it’s because you don’t understand or if it’s because you’re choosing to be negligent. At least in one of your cases, it’s clear that you’re willing to fabricate lies and exacerbate stories to disenfranchise entire communities. This type of manipulation has national impacts, and we’ve seen Aurora painted as this pathetic and vulnerable city, fixating on singular instances of crime, as if the city hasn’t always been a large gang, had a large gang and crime presence. I could swear that Jurinsky wants to sit on Trump’s lap like he’s Santa Claus, wishing for more harm to come to communities of her own city. This traitor isn’t representing the people when she has private meetings with CBZ management and their associates, but it makes sense because she’s just a property-grabbing vulture herself. And the city’s dishonoring its name by limiting the transparency that the community and affected tenants have when it comes to the outcome of these housing units. I’m going to briefly just say that Zev and CBZ management are a very unique instance. No one would ever be given this type of leniency, and when you allow this leniency here, you’re hurting more than just your own community. So there’s all this talk of gangs in Aurora, but they don’t have the right name because the most dangerous gang in Aurora is Aurora P.D. Chamberlain and his rabid dogs need to be put down. Every week, we have a family here that doesn’t deserve to fucking be here. That’s what he did to get killed. That was the justification, to murder Kylan Lewis, murdered by a SWAT officer named Michael Dick, moving his phone fast. And this city needs to jail killer cops, not justify their murder and then give them a demotion. Why would you give someone a demotion if they didn’t do anything wrong? And if picking up a phone is justification for getting shot, then why am I still standing here today? Like I said, something is fucking wrong here. How can someone like Jurinsky even be taken seriously or allowed to have any public influence when they’ve been proven to be a deranged, angry, and a logically spiteful person? This entire council should feel disgraced to sit next to someone like that after those messages were leaked. So with the time that I have left, you know, I want to say that you guys should be ashamed of yourselves that you’re not doing the job that you’ve been elected into. You talk about decorum while you have a fucking disgusting person on your council that disrespects each and every one of you, as well as the citizens and the community of Aurora. We have fucking Sleepy Joe over here who literally can’t keep his eyes open. Maybe you should just fucking retire. At the end of the day, you know, I’m going to come here until I’m not allowed to anymore and until none of you like me. Fuck you.
[applause][1681.65]